All right, I would like to open the Monday, February 22nd, 2021, 4:30 meeting and call it to order. Tim, do you want to do the roll of everybody?
Yep, I just make sure this isn't gonna last many years. So we have Sluckman Lisa Pacheco on the line, Sluckman Trevor Matthews, Sluckman George Grunwald, we also have Town Administrator Peter Jankowski, our Board of Health Agent Tanya Denault, our Building Commissioner Jeff Chandler is also online via phone, Luanne Sousa, Senior Clerk on Sluckman's Office, and myself, Tim McIntosh, the Executive Assistant.
All right, thank you. I'd like to go right to number two because we have to wait till 5 o'clock to do the Board of Health variance. So Jeff, on the agenda, because we haven't talked about these properties in a while, and I just wanted to know where we were with them. Jeff?
I'm sorry. Ah, let's see.
Jeff, I'm just gonna mute your phone so you can put your phone down. I got you. You're all set.
Cool, he's got him.
Thank you. One would be 92 Chase.
Yes.
And another one would be 106 Trip Away.
Yes.
And the third one right now is the 18 Mill Street.
Okay, so can we start? We'll start with Mill Street. Where are we with that?
That there. All right, hang on one second. Okay. Mill Street is, I've given a couple tickets to the owner, and it's Bob Weaver that has been coming down. I've talked to him a number of times, two or three times, I should say, and about removing the vehicles. I talked to him back in November, and he was looking up to see if he can move the vehicles down on South Main Street, where he has property over there. That seems to me that has fallen through. So in the same time, he has been cleaning up. He had at 1.30 cars and now it's under 20. He has cleaned the property up as well. But I did tell him that everything needs to be out of there, and at this point, I would like the blessing to go to council to have them take legal actions because he's, at this point, he's playing a game with us. The game is, it's cheaper for him to pay the fines than it is for him to find a place to rent to put him store him.
Okay, so we'll go through all of them and then we'll see what other, what other actions need to be made. What about 92 Chase?
92 Chase. I went over there with Tanya two or three weeks ago, and I counted 31 vehicles. Now, last year, I talked to them, gave them a fine, and they started cleaning up. There were a number of campers. Well, there are only two campers there now. They had like five campers there. They actually got rid of those, got rid of some vehicles, and that was last year, and now they're back at it again. So this is something, and I'm also dealing with the addition that they put on without a permit. So it's kind of two things that I'm dealing with over there. The unregistered vehicles and the addition. So she submitted a building permit application. It's actually incomplete. I can't make heads or tails out of it, so I will be calling them about that to give me the correct information so they can at least apply for it, or the other option is they're gonna have to take it down.
Okay, is anybody living in the campers?
Yes.
And they're not connected to anything, right?
Not, not to our knowledge. I'm in the process of formatting an additional non-compliance letter. The last one that the Health Department has is roughly March 3rd of 2020. The agent at the time listed a couple of different CMRs. I'm hoping to greatly increase the number of that violation letter, send out a new one.
Because the IV could have a storage tank, a portable storage tank underneath. The problem is they tend to freeze up here. They don't work that well.
Well, you're not supposed to have anybody living in a camper. That's against the bylaws of the town. So I don't even know, having a conversation, I don't even care what he has down below, but it's illegal. So whatever remedy that we have to take to go down and make sure that A, no one's living in that, and B, we gotta clean up that property. It is, it's, it's a, not only is it an eyesore, it's, it's a board of health issue. It's a, there's other stuff going on over there that I don't even want to get into, that needs to be taken care of. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but if you go by it, you can see what's going on.
Why don't we go directly to legal on that and start proceedings?
Yeah, we're gonna, so that I want to go through all of them, and, and then we can vote to allow Jeff and Tanya to use legal, how they see fit. So we'll vote on that, but I want to make sure that we have an update on all the properties, and then we can vote on what the properties from there.
Okay.
All right. So I think you kind of know how the board feels. I can see it on Trevor's face too, so about, about that. And 106 Chip Away?
106 Chip Away is, he has been issued some tickets. I personally have not issued them a ticket. I've taken pictures. I have some pictures, aerial views that I've looked at, and I'm just trying to get to a point that I can either issue him a ticket, probably the last ticket that we would issue, and then go legal, because he again is another one that's just trying to beat the system and play the game and, and not do anything.
All right, so, but there was a backhoe in that backyard, and they were doing some digging. I don't know what they were digging, but there was a big pile of dirt on the side of the backhoe, so I know that they were doing something over there. And there's a lot more vehicles than there were before, and there's also a camper in that backyard too. Do you don't know if anybody's living in there, do you?
I do know. I don't know.
All right.
Do another site visit with that, with that thing.
Well, the site visit, he's already told us not to go on his property.
Oh, Chip Away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Can we have a cruiser go by there every night and see if there's lights in the camper? That, you know, look for evidence that somebody is living there or using it?
So George, the way he has it is that he put all kinds of junk in front of it, so you can't even tell if anybody's in there or not. He put like a, he blocked the site passage. You can't see. But I mean, look, to send a cruiser there or an officer just to, to look if they can, sure, but I think that we can also probably take some pictures. So maybe we can get some more pictures of over there of all the properties, because we have 92 Chase too. Some aerial pictures of that too, but maybe we can get an update on that.
Yeah, I have one more property that is not on the list, but I brought it up a while ago. The, the, it's parcel 101-5 Lark Lane on the Bay Shores. I'm not sure, there's, I know it's kind of a weird situation there. The owners don't live near the property.
Right.
Split ownership, but it also has like a lot of, you know, abandoned cars and dangerous stuff that potentially could be leaking into the, the river there, the Bay Shores.
Yeah.
So nothing else. I don't expect you to report it today. Just want to put that out there, because I know it's something that people have been reaching out to me pretty frequently about the last year or so.
There was something to do with a legal issue over there too, I think, Trevor.
Yeah, it was, it was, I got a, David, actually, he gave me a big, you know, email explaining the whole
Yeah.
situation, and it's, it's not straightforward at all.
No.
But I know that nothing has really been done. It's kind of been a sort of like a cat and mouse kind of thing too, where the owners said that they start cleaning up a little bit of it, but never actually finished the job. And there's just a lot of kids that play around there, and it's a pretty dangerous situation.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to allow the Building Inspector and the Board of Health Agent to do what they deem necessary and proper, and also to allow them to talk to council with regards to these three and possibly four parcels.
I'll grab that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sluckman, sorry, Sluckman Grunwald?
Yes.
Sluckman Matthews?
Yes.
And Sluckman Pacheco?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Okay, can I bring up one last thing? Is it too late? 180 Brayley Road. At this point, that's already been gone to, council has that now. We are taking the backseat on this. I haven't heard anything. Should I reach out to Jeff Blake to see any progress or?
Yeah, that makes sense. We always forget about that one because it's been an ongoing situation for like 10 years, so.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Tanya, you can't go anywhere. But. Actually, why don't we go, since you're here, and then we'll probably go right into the Board of Health variance. Why don't we just go into your goals? Is that all right, George?
Yeah, that's fine.
So she doesn't have to stick around.
Okay. I don't have anything ready. Tanya was going to send me something, and I didn't get a chance to look at it yet. So can we postpone this to the next meeting, to goals?
Meeting's next week.
Yeah, I mean, Tanya's already gotten mine. I, I went through them with her, so Trevor, I don't know if you had anything.
No, I, I, I didn't realize it was gonna be back in the genital today. About a tough week, so I will. I can put something together though.
All right.
I want her to keep doing what she's doing. She seems to be doing a great job, so that can be the goal.
Um, just so the board's aware that we do, regarding 92 Chase, we do have a new video and new pictures that, that will assist us in the process and council. So that was done two weeks ago. I have a date stamp on that showing the whole site. So we're, we're on top of that. And George has some, has a few just general thoughts that I have regarding the goals that the board, the chair and the board can discuss, you know, as, as we continue. It's just a start. But I do understand that there are different levels of topics of what I call in, in an overall general public complaint file, meaning sites that have violations of, of very, you know, varying degrees of, you know, extremes. There seems to be several, and I think one of the, one of the goals that I may, you know, toss out is to itemize those and create, you know, a mitigation plan for those sites, and then some suggestions I have to hopefully avoid council in the near, thank you, Jeff, in the near future. And a lot of that, what I found successful in the past is bringing for some of these issues to the board swiftly after they've received notification by certified mail by the Health Department, giving them a site-specific time for compliance, and if that compliance is not met, then the next step would be to appear in front of the Board of Health to discuss the violations at hand and what that mitigation plan would be. This assists the town saving money with going to council and keeps the board abreast on the situations that were, that are occurring, such as, I'm sorry, Trevor brought up, was it Lark Lane?
Correct.
Is that what it was, you know? So I'll pull some of these, and if the board can provide me some of these sites in an email, I will add them to the list and start taking a look at them.
Absolutely.
Sounds perfect.
Yeah.
All right, then it's still not 5 o'clock and we can't do anything, so I'll go to item number three. Adopt the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Health Information and Guidance for Persons in Quarantine Due to COVID as a town's COVID-19 quarantine policy. Do you have a motion to accept that policy?
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sluckman Matthews?
Yes.
Sluckman Pacheco?
Yes.
And Sluckman Grunwald?
Yes.
All out of order there, sorry about that.
Okay, number four announcement. We have all agreed and signed the memorandum of agreement with the Preetown Police Association Regarding the Maternity Leave. I think everybody, I think you got everybody's signature, right?
I did, yep.
Okay. Um, ambulance abatements and write-offs for the month of January contractual allowances in the amount of $102,550.72. And the write-offs in the amount of $20,319.34 for a total amount of $122,876. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion granted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sluckman Grunwald?
Yes.
Sluckman Matthews?
Yes.
And Sluckman Pacheco?
Yes.
Just like to add to this. We, we always talk about the abatements and the write-offs. Could we also get the number of the actual revenue that we've generated from that?
That's the next page in the package, George.
Yeah, it was in there, George.
Oh. Okay. All right.
Yeah, Kim's been very good about getting that to me the same day Gary gets the abatements to, to us, so I try to include it in the packet when we have it.
Okay.
All right, um, next revised snowplow agreement, David or whomever?
David. I think you said David.
Oh, I did, sorry, Peter.
It's close enough.
Trevor, it has been a hard week.
So Luanne did some research, and she gave you six area companies that the snow independent contractors use for insurance. Two of them have zero add-on for commercial liability, if they added us as an additional add-on. One of them is 20 bucks. The other ones all range from $7,500, $75 to essentially $200 or $250. So, but we only have five out of 25 that do not have us listed as additionally insured. So I mean, you're kind of doing it now already, and I know it's a little late for this year, but I think we need to do that. I think just looking at the incident that's happened over the last couple of weeks, or the last week or so, puts town at liability, so I think it's just a general business step to do that. If you wanted to, we could, I guess, argue that we could give them a signing bonus on proving that they have commercial insurance that has us listed as an additionally assured for like 50 bucks or 100 bucks, but, but added to their first pay, but I think it's something we really need to do, and I don't, I don't think it's not cost-effective for us to do that. The only thing we do have to double-check on is, one of the insurance companies did say that we may have someone who is plowing for us that has personal insurance, not commercial insurance, which would really leave us in a bind because their insurance would not cover. So we have to really ensure that they have commercial insurance and not personal insurance. You can't tell from the policy cover sheets that we have right now. So that's what she did, and I, any questions, and I'll answer them if I can.
Um, if we put this into play right now, are we going to lose those drivers?
I'm gonna make it effective after July 1st. That's what I would ask, for you to make it effective after July 1st. I think we've had one person come in, Luanne, can let me know. I think we had one person come in, or maybe even two, since I've been here, so we're really at the end of the process.
All right, so this would really be for next season.
Yeah, I want to draft the policy now, because, but, and get it approved and have it automatically fall into place as of July 1st.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm just making sure that we're not gonna force them to do that right now, because I don't want to lose those five people, but I mean, all right, we, and, and then we can, as we move closer to, um, you know, the end of the summer, when we really start to talk about the police, about the snowplow contracts, we can talk about what we, what would be an incentive. We tried to incentivize this to get them to sign up early. It didn't really work, so maybe there's another way around that, and maybe offering, you know, the $50, $100, whatever, whatever it is, to offset the cost of the additional insurance might be a good idea.
I just wanted to try and get the policy done, because if I wait, I'm gonna forget, to be honest, by the time.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to to adopt the revised snowplow agreement.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Sluckman Grunwald?
Can I ask, one, that would be amended to be effective July 1st?
Yes, that we, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure how everybody else feels, want it to affect this year.
I agree.
Current drivers, I would have them, it's kind of hard to come in the middle of all of this and say, okay, now you gotta get the insurance, so definitely for next year, though.
All right, so just gotta do a roll call there. Sluckman Grunwald?
Yes.
Sluckman Matthews?
Yes.
And Sluckman Pacheco?
Yes. All right, approval of minutes from previous meetings. Do I have a motion to adopt and?
I just want to give the dates on that. We have, yep, February 10th, February 11th, and February 16th. And starting next meeting, I'll go back to putting the dates on the agenda. It was an oversight this time, so.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sluckman Grunwald?
Yes.
Sluckman Matthews?
Yes.
And Sluckman Pacheco?
Yes. David, if you can do your town administrator's report in six minutes, you got it.
Because it hasn't happened until today. I brought up David, and then I think that got in your head.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think this is your fault.
Yikes.
I'm not sure David had a mustache, so. The only, the only thing, as of note, is I've been meeting with everyone. I've met almost everybody in town. I still have the firemen to do and a few others, but almost done that. I'm meeting with the historical commission person, Tim and I are, I believe. If not, I think he's been volunteering to meet him, meet her with me, to talk about the windows in the town hall, what we can do about that, and make sure we're meeting compliance with everybody. I have had a couple of discussions with other folks saying that we're not required to do, because we don't have the bylaws, but we want to play nice with everybody, but at the same time, it's, you gotta save some money. It's cold and the, you know, it's just come, the windows are bad, so we gotta work on that. So that, that's the only thing I had a real note coming up. Otherwise, I've been keeping you folks pretty much advised what's been happening.
Okay, I know that we were talking to the Sheriff's Department and trying to get the prisoner workforce to come over and do the gazebo. A letter was sent to them. My contact over there is waiting for follow-up, so I'm just wondering if maybe we could follow up and see where, where we are at. So maybe we can get this solidified for the spring.
Okay, I'll call. I didn't know, I'm last.
Yep, no, that's fine. If you don't have it, I'll forward you the email, so then that way you'll have it.
That's fine, thank you.
All right. Um, we have five minutes.
I can do Personnel Board.
Okay, perfect.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Gilbert Maderas from the Board of Registros effective February 16th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Sluckman Grunwald?
Yes.
Sluckman Matthews?
Yes.
And Sluckman Pacheco?
Yes.
I did have one small thing. We actually, they installed the wall across the hall, the, it's dividing the Health Office and the Building Office. The electrician was in today, so I believe it's all electrified and up. I think next week, well, they're gonna try to mud it this week and paint the sheetrock. I don't know if it's gonna be this week or next week, so it's a good step in the right direction, I think. It seems to work well.
Great.
I think it's 5 o'clock, right?
Huh?
It is 5 o'clock, so.
Yep, a good big start.
All right. So I'll turn it over to Tanya and the Board of Health, but this is a health variance for 20 South Main Street.
Um, the engineer's present as well, but the plan is in front of you that was scanned over, and the suggestions that I have that the board, you know, hopefully will, pending your approval of this variance, put into place as conditional of these variance approvals. The main variance that, you know, there's two, there's, ooh, oops, there we go, sorry.
Nope, I just shared the screen for the.
Thanks. The two top variants of analysis and a reduction of two holes from one are, are to me a non-priority issue, but they are variances. But the third one is really what appears in front of the board, reduction from 50 feet to 10 foot as far as a reduction from the SAS to the wetland. And when looking on the site, you'll see that to the left, all the way to the left, right at the Asana River, that box there is your leaching facility. The engineers done a really good job designing a bottomless sand filter with the addition of an Advantex additional treatment for the effluent typically to reduce the nitrogen for the site. It's for an existing three-bedroom dwelling. One of the conditions pending your approval would be that any future addition of habitable space be brought in front of the board to keep checks on these variance applications. It's a very useful tool, and it goes very quickly. But all things considered, due to the site restrictions, the size of lot, the way dwelling is positioned, this I think is a wonderful fit for the site, and the only thing that we're looking for is what's called from the DEP under their general permit use, is there a specific maintenance and testing required? Some of that maintenance continues, and some of the testing can only be for one or two years, depending on the specifics of it. I didn't get into that because referring to the general use permit from DEP will satisfy the overall testing and maintenance of the system, which, which is a critical component of the site and for the success of the site, the success of the unit, and in treating the effluent.
Niles, do you have anything to add?
No, I think, I think your agent, Tanya, did a great job, and honestly, it's, again, we feel as though it's definitely the best suited system for this property. Basically, what's happening, the one thing I will mention is the one, the one thing that is pushing this thing further back, the system further back towards the river is the, the existence of the well up in the front of the property. So, you know, we were able to maintain a 50, I mean, I'm sorry, a 100-foot buffer to that, which is required by Title V, but unfortunately, that did push us towards to the, to the wetland than we would be allowed otherwise. So besides that, yeah, this, this system is definitely, we proposed this in Preetown before, and it has been approved on other various sites. Usually used on very tight sites, and we feel as though this is definitely the best suited for this property, so be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
You mentioned it well. Isn't that house on Town Water?
No, it is not.
That was another site, George, that we were discussing. There's still a private well on it, but it's upgrading of the system.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It's upgrading of the system here, so, and it's outside the 100-foot buffer.
Okay. Now, why, isn't that property on Town Water? The water goes right by there.
It's, it's just always been on a well. Every other property, you know, it, it's just never been tied in.
But somebody needs to explain that to me. I don't quite understand. All the other properties on North Main Street and Water Street were forced to tie into water. Why not this property?
Why, why would they be forced?
Well, because of the contamination. Well, because of the contamination, and then they put the uh water lines in for that.
Uh that's that's news to me. Um you know, I'm just going by what's on the property itself and what's there and we're meeting the requirements otherwise, so.
Lisa, yeah?
I that was before my time. I don't know, but we can definitely ask.
That was only a few years ago, when the water lines came in after the the pollution from the diesel fuel. When was that? That wasn't that long ago.
That was probably about twenty years ago, George. I remember that when I was, I remember that from when I was a a wee little one.
But didn't they bring the water line right up South Main? And I'm sorry, up right up North Main even?
Yeah, many years ago.
Yeah, okay, well, so the the water line is there. Uh and people on South, I'm sorry, on Water Street are on the water line, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So why is this property not on the water line?
That I don't know.
Yeah, one thing that I could do, George, and maybe add this to my um my list is. When these sites do come up, I can check in with water and sewer and try to get a little bit of information from them. It is significantly upgrading, upgrading of the design that's in front of you significantly. I mean, we're going from. Elevation five to about elevation twenty-four, yeah, right on twenty-four. Um and Niles, there's um if you look on the plan too, just not to just add another component to it. But this site, there's um the existing dwelling, then there's a deck and there's a step down, and it looks like. Um whether it's like a patio or pavers and then another another step down, Niles, there's quite a bit of landscaping and such. On the site that would also be really challenging. If we were to bring it in, we'd gain roughly. Um I don't know, we might gain thirty feet, but then we'd be hitting into a lot of topography issues too. So great point regarding Town Water. That's something that I should probably make a note on for my review. And checking in with Chandler and or Kevin. Uh in addition to. I think Niles might be able to add a little bit more is that the site's got a lot going on as it relates to the topography and their use of the. Like patios or concrete or such.
Uh that's absolutely correct. I mean, as far as pulling it further up gradient, um would would absolutely, I mean, they've got a. A hot tub uh up there, and this is all actually beautiful paved, uh you know, pavers and retaining wall. Um and these and these bottomless sand filters are required to be out of the ground uh by a minimum of two feet. Um as part of their general permit approval, so it would basically render that whole area unusable for all that existing landscape area, so. Um yes, that that's another uh great point as well. But as far as far as the the water service goes, I can't answer that question. I'm only working with what's here and meeting the requirements of what's here, so.
Alright, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? George, did you say aye or nothing?
No, I said aye.
Okay, I didn't hear you, sorry.
I have to do a roll call anyway. Salkman Grunwald? Salkman Matthews? And Salkman Pacheco?
Okay, um I'll just follow up. I just um got an answer. Um they can use a well if they want to. There's no requirement to connect to Town Water. So I mean, if we want to change that, that I'm sure the water department would take care of that. Niles, thank you so much. You too.
Lisa, to get back to the water. It was my impression that all the homes on the water line were charged for that. Is that correct or not?
I I don't have the answer to that. That would, like I said, that was a long time ago, way before me. And I guess we would have to ask or have Peter ask, um you know, the water commissioners or the or Kevin or whomever down there. It's probably before Kevin's time too, right? Yeah, I I don't know. I just I I just asked the question and got an answer. That's all I know.
Okay, that diesel spill that contaminated the area wasn't twenty years ago, I guess. That something is wrong here. Well, we'll have to look into it.
Okay, alright, um does anybody have anything else to come before the board?
Sorry, trash recycling RFP, you guys kept.
Oh, yeah, that's it, okay. Um so did everybody look it over the trash and recycling that Peter had worked on? Okay, um do you have a motion to go out um for this proposal?
Motion granted.
Alright, all in favor?
Salkman Grunwald? Salkman Matthews? And Salkman Pacheco?
Yes, so Peter, that's gonna be um for three one. You're gonna send that.
I'm gonna have a mail out tomorrow. We have, I think, there's ten or twelve companies in the area, so we're gonna post it. Make normal everything, but I think we're gonna mail it out to the twelve companies too.
Perfect. Anybody have anything else? Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion granted.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Actually, Lisa, before you go? Uh Tanya had just sent a question over. I'm not exactly sure. Uh it submitted the conditions pending the approval of the variance. Can these still be added? I don't know. Tanya, could you just tell us a little more about that?
They were the um the present, the memo that I provided to the board had a list of conditions that usually are put into the um the vote. But I just want to make sure that those were acceptable. There were a couple of conditions, um the habitable spaces. And particularly the inspection, maintenance, and testing of the system. They were itemized out.
So when we say like recommended by the board of health agent, that would include all of your um.
Oh, it would, okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alrighty.
Alright, uh so just Salkman Grunwald calling the vote on that uh motion to adjourn. Salkman Matthews? And Salkman Pacheco? Alright, thank you.